Ladies and gentlemen, I am pleased to report we have a quorum. There are 292 town meeting members, so the number required for a quorum is 147. Town Clerk Sarah Aruda has informed me that we have 153 members at 7:02. Could you please stand to salute the flag? I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, to the republic which is sacred, and to the citizens of this country. Thank you very much, you may be seated, please. So, let's quickly go over the ground rules for this evening, just to remind everyone. There is no smoking in the school or on school grounds. If you have not already silenced your cellphone, could you please do it now? In terms of the motions, after I've read the title of each article, the sponsor will say a few words to summarize the article. A motion will be made by a town meeting member, it will be seconded by a town meeting member, and then I will recognize people in the following order. First, those who have not previously spoken at all, and then those who have not spoken on the article being debated. Please do not speak until you have a microphone in hand, because the viewing audience and some of your colleagues are going to be unable to hear you without a microphone. Please rise and give your name and precinct number every time you speak. Please hand over the microphone when you are done asking your question. We do not allow for one-on-one debate here. The town meeting members are asked to pose all the questions through me as the chair. I'll do my best to get you the answers you need to make good decisions. We do not cross-examine each other, town officials or anyone else. It's not a trial or an interrogation, we're trying to get enough information to make good decisions. The only person that may, the only person, only people recognized by the moderator may speak, and you may not yield your time to another speaker. While we have no formal speaking limits, please be brief and try not to be repetitious. When you're discussing an issue, please focus on the issue and not on people, refer to issues, positions, or points of view. We don't name-call, we don't attack other people's integrity. We're all here to do the town's business, and we may do it in different ways, but let's respect the differences. Okay. Before we get started, I'm going to ask, I want to introduce the people on the side of me. So, let me introduce the people next to me. Immediately to my left is our town council, Anthony Salvastano. Next to Mr. Salvastano is our town clerk, Sarah Haskell Aruda. And then we have our co-town administrators, Chris Vitale and Gary Carrero. I'm going to start with, I actually, one second, please. We have DCTV tonight, who are, they are recording this meeting for us, and I want to recognize the people who are helping us with that. Peter Chase, Michael Menez, Daniel Maderas, Chad Amaral, Jessica Gove, John Silva, Todd Migliacci, Daniel Ferguson, and Kyle Silver. So, thank you, DCTV, as always. Now, I'm going to start with our preliminary motions, and for those, I will turn to Mr. Salvastano.
Moved that the meeting note the correct call of the warrant and the lawful posting in return of service thereon, and that the moderator is hereby relieved from reading each article in its entirety and is allowed to refer to them by title and number, and that the moderator is hereby allowed to take up action on any of the several articles out of numerical sequence as she may determine, and that a teller count be not, excuse me, not need to be taken on motions requiring two-thirds, four-fifths, or nine-tenths votes, and that the moderator may declare whether the motion passes or fails.
Thank you very much. Do I have a motion? And a second. All ready to vote? All in favor of the preliminary motions as read by Attorney Salvastano, please raise your hand. Opposed, please raise your hand. The preliminary motions pass at 7:06. Article 1, Community Preservation Committee Professional Survey and Preliminary Design of Proposed Northern Scenic Greenway. Mr. Buddy Baker-Smith, please.
This is a, this article represents a project funding request for, in the amount of $25,000. And this will fund a professional survey and some preliminary design for a greenway path through the northern part of town, which will, basically, the proposal is to build a path along the right-of-way of Old Fall River, Old Fall River Road. This is part of a regional effort to provide a continuous, dedicated pathway between communities on the South Coast that may eventually connect to the Cape. Town meeting in 2018 had approved funding to review a variety of routes for such a path through the town of Dartmouth, and as a result of that work and some additional funds, the preferred route was identified as going along Fall River, Old Fall River Road. So, the funding requested here is to do a professional survey of the preferred route, which is about a 5.4-mile route that will go from the Dartmouth-Westport line to the New Bedford-Dartmouth line. A dedicated path for pedestrians and bicyclists, so it's separate from the road. And this will be the state match, or the local match, for state funding requests for Mass Trails, which is additional $160,000 for this project, this phase of the project. And the South Coast Bike Way Alliance has already raised, I think approximately $15,000 towards this, for, a total cost estimated for this phase of the project is about $200,000. And this will enable the project to get to a point in which further design work, they can pursue funding for further design work and ultimately, construction. And I move that the town meeting approve this article.
Fantastic. May I have a second, please? Thank you. Any discussion on Article 1? Gentleman right here, please.
Yeah, hi, Tom Yenna, Precinct 1. What is going to be allowed to walk on this? Is it bicycles, people walking? How about horses?
Mr. Baker-
Precinct 1, up there, there's more horses, I think, than the whole town's got. In fact, the control officer for animals in Dartmouth lives there, and they got a lot of horses. My daughter, everybody up and down. And I wonder if the horses are allowed to get onto this? Can anybody answer yes or no?
Well, Mr. Yenna, let me see if I can get you an answer to that. Mr. Baker-Smith, are horses going to be allowed on this route?
I would like to, if the moderator is fine with it, there are probably members of the Bike Way, the Pathways Committee on Town who's done a lot of work in researching this and coming up with this proposal, so if-
Sure, I'd be happy to recognize a representative from the Pathways Committee that might want to come down and speak to that. Are you on the Pathways Committee? Sure, come on up, please.
Sandra Maderas, Precinct 2, Dartmouth Pathways Committee and South Coast Bike Way Alliance. I just was posed the same question out in the hallway. I don't have a definitive answer. I do cycle a lot, and we go on a lot of pathways in different communities where horses are allowed. I don't know what the current regulations are for Massachusetts trails, per se, but we can certainly look into that. Some towns have built pathways with additional areas just for horse use. I know there's a lovely trail in Rhode Island that has a paved path and then a dirt path alongside for the horses. So, this is a preliminary phase. If we find out more, I can certainly look into it to see whether horses would be allowed according to, you know, Massachusetts laws and such.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Yenna, it doesn't seem as if we know at this point.
One other question. If they're allowed, or if they are going to be allowed? How about their manure? Who's going to pick it up? People riding it? I hear this all the time up in that area. You go across somebody's lawn, they take a crap. What happens? No. All right? I want to tell you something, I know a little bit more. Horse neck, which is the area, after Labor Day, horses can go up and down that beach, run, race, whatever they want, they're allowed in there. Come spring, they're not allowed in there. But part of the deal is you've got to clean up after them. So, if they're allowed in this walkway, who's going to clean up? Are they, the people riding it, if they're allowed? There's a question that's been asked me, and I don't know how to answer it.
Yep, I'm not sure we can get a definitive answer, but it sounds like we're going to take some steps to look into it, and, you know, I know they're allowed in other places like Destruction Brookwoods and the like. So, we will look into it, but I don't think I can get you an answer for this evening. Thank you, Mr. Yenna.
That's all.
Thank you. Thank you. Any further discussion on Article 1? The gentleman behind Mr. Yenna, please.
Gil Borges, Precinct 4. It seems like we're going to be $200,000 into this without a shovel in the ground. Is there an estimate as to how much this will actually cost when it does get built, if it does get built?
Sure, it sounds like there were some matching dollars, but either of you, could either of you answer that?
Sandra Maderas, Precinct 2. This study is approximately $200,000. It would give us a more definitive analysis of the current exist, conditions, with the town putting up $25,000 in CPC funds, South Coast Bike Way contributing $15,000 in funds, and $160,000 Mass Trails grant if awarded. This study also does not obligate us to go any further in the event that, for some reason, it's not feasible.
Great. Any further-
These study did show preliminary costs, estimates. I'm just trying to put my hand on it. Construction cost estimate, 6.3 million.
Okay. Thank you. Any further discussion on Article 1? Are we ready to vote? All in favor of Article 1, please raise your hand. Opposed, please raise your hand. Article 1 passes at 7:14 PM. Article 2, appropriation to the stabilization fund. Mr. Carrero.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Article 2 is the appropriation to the town stabilization fund from surplus revenue pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 40, Section 5B. The amount of $500,000 represents the contribution of monies maintaining the town at 10% of the operating revenues, as defined by the town's financial policies. The current balance in the stabilization fund is $12,482,383.47.
Thank you. Do I have a motion on Article 2? Thank you, and a second. I also would like select board recommendation, which I failed to ask for on Article 1. Sorry about that.
It's understandable. It's been a few months since we've been here, so-
Right?
Select Board recommends this Article 5-0.
Thank you. And Finance Committee recommendation?
FinCom recommends it 7-0-0.
Thank you. Any discussion on Article 2? Gentleman in the back there, please. I'm going to, I'm going to, they've got a microphone, they're going to hand you, please.
Edi Caponi, Precinct 5. Yeah, curious, how much surplus revenue was certified for fiscal '24 in total? Just that one year, not the balance.
Mr. Carrero, yes?
Right, for fiscal '24, was $7,327,303 in the, in the general fund.
Yeah, and one quick follow-up question. How much of that came from turnbacks from the, from the departments?
Roughly, percentage-wise, I'm not sure on a percentage-wise, but most of it was for capital, capital articles that we had rescinded, both Chris and I had-
And how many, how many dollars were turned back from the general, to the general fund from the operating departments?
We're going to have our town accountant come up and give the detail on that.
I don't know that we have that number in front of us. Do we have a ballpark figure?
The majority, the majority of it was, I don't have the detail for each, each department, but the majority was capital items that were either rescinded or not spent in the cost of the budget, but minimal amount from the, from turnbacks, but some of it was turnbacks from, from each department. Some more than others, obviously, yeah.
Thank you. Any further discussion on Article 2? Are we ready to vote? All, I, do you have a question? Yes, I'm sorry.
Hola, Precinct-
Could you say your name again? We just didn't hear-
Joseph O'Connell.
Thank you.
Precinct 9.
Thank you.
Just a question, I may have missed it with the earlier question, but pertaining to the balance of the stabilization fund, what is it at this point?
The balance would be prior to this article, if it gets voted, is $12,482,383.47.
Any further discussion on Article 2? Are we ready to vote? All in favor, please indicate by raising your hand. Opposed, please raise your hand. Article 2 passes at 7:17. Article 3. Article 3, appropriation for collective bargaining and non-union agreements. Article 3, Mr. Carrero.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Article 3 funds the collective bargaining stabilization fund in the amount of $300,000. This reflects the amount of collective bargaining and non-union personnel pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 40, Section 5B.
Thank you. Do I have a motion on Article 3? And a second. Thank you. Any select board recommendation?
Select Board recommends 5-0.
Finance Committee recommendation, please.
FinCom recommends 7-0-0.
Thank you. Any discussion on Article 3? Are we ready to vote? All in favor of Article 3, please raise your hand. Opposed, please raise your hand. Article 3 passes at 7:18. Article 4, supplemental appropriation for collective bargaining agreement, Mr. Carrero.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Article 4 funds the FY '23 to FY '25 collective bargaining agreements between the town and the police brotherhood, in the amount of $900,000 from various funding sources, as printed in the warrant.
Thank you, and I have a motion and select board recommendation?
Select Board recommends 5-0.
And Finance Committee recommendation, please.
FinCom recommends 7-0-0.
Any discussion on Article 4? Are we ready to vote? All in favor of Article 4, please raise your hand. Opposed, please raise your hand. Article 4 passes at 7:19. Article 5, acceptance of Capital Planning Committee report and funding of fiscal year 2024 capital plan, 2025, I'm sorry, capital plan. Mr. Carrero.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Article 5 funds the annual CPC, the capital committee requests. Article 5 includes the items that the Capital Planning Committee has voted on and is now being recommended to be funded from various funding sources, as printed in the warrant, totaling $6,349,877.
Thank you. Select Board recommendation? Uh, sorry, do I have a motion?
Moved, and Select Board recommends 5-0.
And a second? Thank you. And a second, do I have a second? Thank you. And Finance Committee recommendation?
FinCom recommends 8-0-0.
Thank you. Mr. Tattelbaum, I know you'd like to speak on Article 5. Do you have a microphone, please?
Okay, sorry. I'm here to speak about long-range planning. Most of you received a handout, which we put out, looks kind of like this. The Long Range Planning Committee is dedicated to looking 30 to 40 years ahead, to focus on the large capital projects that will give our residents the schools, the clean water, sewer treatment, the roads, a bridge, and more, that we can be proud of. We're focused on setting priorities. What needs to be done first, what can be delayed, and what can be more long-term. How do we pay for all this with a current limited revenue base? Is an override at some point inevitable? Increased taxes? Expense reductions? What grants and financing should we consider? We will offer future workshops for residents to weigh in. What kind of town do you want? What level, what level of services makes sense? We need to provide the resources to our schools to continue our reputation of a great school system, which only advances the quality of life and adds value to your homes here in Dartmouth. How we pay for all this? Long-range planning is now a necessity. Our goal, to present a comprehensive, fully-fettered, long-range plan at our next Springtown meeting. Finally, I'd like to publicly identify our committee as it currently stands. We represent a cross-section of our town government. Rob Almy is a Chair of the Department of Public Works. Bruce Brooks is a Chair of the Capital Planning Committee. Terry Ham's on the Finance Committee. Jim Kiley is the Assistant Superintendent of Schools. Chris Vitale and Gary Carrero are co-town administrators. Magnolia McCormish, Communications Coordinator, and me, I'm Dave Tattelbaum from the Select Board. We encourage your feedback and information, please look ahead, and we're going to, we're going to fire information going forward, and so that we keep you informed, and we, I have to stress and finally say, please participate, give us your feedback, and we'll end up with a program that we can make sense for us all. Thank you very much.
So, Mr. Tattelbaum, just to tie it into this, what we're seeing in front of us is short-term spending, but you're highlighting that there is a group that is focused on a longer-term plan, looking ahead for the town and our capital needs, is that-
That is correct. This, this Article 5 is strictly for short-term plans.
Okay, thank you, and-
Thank you for your time.
Sure. And I know Mr. Silver, I believe, wants to speak on this article, so may I have a microphone?
Good evening, Nathan Silver, Precinct 6. I have a question on each one of these capital line items, and the question is, will any of these capital requests result in future operational cost increases? And if so, what is the magnitude of those increases? And the reason I ask that is because in the FY '24 Springtown meeting, a capital request was made by MIS. In fact, it was three line items total, which totaled $115,000. And that request was to buy software, right? Microsoft 360 and a couple other pieces of software. And it was relatively simple request, and it was passed without discussion by this body. Now, fast forward to the FY '25 Springtown meeting that we just passed this, this springtime, because we made that capital purchase of $115,000 in FY '24, the MIS operational budget had to increase by 25% or $160,000 in the same fiscal year as we were laying off educators from our school department. So, I suspect that if it was known at this time that by making that $115,000 capital investment, we would also be tying our hands to $1 million of spending over the course of the next five to six years, there would have at least been a discussion in this body as to if now was the right time to make that investment. So, I did give Chris and Gary the heads up, I'd be asking this question, I look forward to the response, but I will be asking this question at any town meeting that I'm a part of, because I think it's important for this body to be informed of the future implications of the decisions that we make today. So, I want to be clear, though, I'm not saying that it is never a good idea to make a capital investment that results in future operational cost increases. I'm not saying that at all. In fact, I'm not even saying that, that the decision that was made in FY '24 was the wrong decision. I don't know enough about that software to have an opinion one way or the other. All I'm saying is that it's important, it's important for this body to have the information it needs to make an informed decision, so that we can come to a better conclusion. So, again, my question is, will any of these capital requests result in future operational cost increases? And if so, what is the magnitude of those increases? Thank you.
So you are correct, a couple of these items in the capital requests, this, for the fall here, do have an implication in the FY '26 budget and will, going forward. Mainly, the multi-authent, factor authentication software implementation for town offices for 10,000, and the DATO backup software implementation for the police department, 24,376. So the impact to the budget will be $330 a month for the duo multi-factor authentication for the town, which is 3,900, roughly $4,000 annually. And then for the DATO backup for the police, 1798 monthly, and then $21,000 annually. So you are correct, there will be implement, there will be, when we implement these, if town, town meeting votes on that, they will be put into the budget, the support will be put into the budget going forward. And I think it's important to, to remind town meeting also, the conversations that we've had, is that I've been on a lot of rating calls through the course of my career, and I was surprised to hear that the last, when we went on the last rating call, you know, the first thing they, I, I think they're gonna talk about is finances. Well, they were worried about climate resiliency and, and cyber attacks. So the bondholders who purchased the bonds when we go out for borrowing are now looking for those two key items. Is the town prepared for climate resiliency? And is it, is it prepared for a cyber attack? So if you look back, I think two years ago, the city of New Bedford, for instance, was hit by ransomware. They had to pay, initially, it was 2.5 million that they were held hostage for. I think they ended up paying about $500,000 in cash to some foreign country to release those, that information from, from them, to get it back, so the city could run again in their software. So it's important that we do this, and it's important that we look at this, but I agree, I think that going forward, it's important that we let town meeting know if there's implications to the budget, and we plan on doing that.
So, Mr. Carrero, of the line items in Article Five, the only two in which there's future spending as a result of passage would be those two items that are under town government? Is that correct?
Town, yes. If you look at the others, they're mainly replacement of vehicles, which we do monitor with the departments. If there's a vehicle that's being replaced, we wanna make sure that the vehicle that's being replaced is not being insured, you know, so we don't have duplication of policies. So both Chris and I had looked at that at the beginning of the year.
Okay. Any further discussion on Article Five? Down in front here, please.
Arthur Gerard.
What, Mr. Gerard, could you please wait for our microphone? Thank you. I want everyone to be able to hear your question.
Arthur Gerard, Precinct Two. I see we got road maintenance and improvement, and I've been seeing a lot of roadwork in the town, and that everyone's doing an outstanding job. But as, every six months, I bring up, I never see anything on cross-road. And I know, I keep hearing it's complicated and everything, but we're not even spending any money for a plan. Nothing's being done for cross-road, we have flooding there, and, and it's a mess. And I would like to bring it to the attention and get it fixed.
Thank you, Mr. Gerard. Do you wanna speak to that? I think Mr. Barber's gonna come talk about that.
I'm Mr. Gerard. So we are working currently with a consultant. We have submitted plans, they're at 25% completion, to Mass DOT for the improvement of cross-road in phases. The first phase is from about Walmart area, fire station entrance, to the Autumn Glen assisted living, right around the bend that's, that's having some problems. They have completed the survey and the preliminary design. We walked with Mass DOT and all of the utilities. And we're, I think they are planning to schedule a design public hearing sometime in November. We haven't heard on the schedule yet, but that should be scheduled, and we'll, you know, we walked with the utilities. Eversource is still planning to do some more work out there, replacing their gas mains. And from the survey that the consultants did, we, we have all the data from their survey, and we're working on an interim stormwater design to, to mitigate some of the flooding around that bend until, until they can get to it.
Thank you, Mr. Barber. Do we have another question? The gentleman in the back, and I'll come back to you, Mr. Yenna. The gentleman in the back hasn't spoken.
Kevin Murphy, Precinct Eight. Mr. Tattelbaum, you mentioned as part of the capital planning, roads and bridges. About three years ago, the state gave us $2 million grant for a study for the Pedenham Bridge. Do we have any idea what, what the status of that study is for that $2 million that we've been awarded almost three years ago?
Do you, Mr. Carrero, do you wanna speak? Mr. Barber?
Okay, Mr. Murphy. The state awarded that design project, so the $2 million was, was towards design of either replacement or rehabilitation of the Pedenham Bridge. That project was awarded by Mass DOT to a consultant, Majesty and Masters, and they are working on some design. And they, they came down in April, and before we started operating the bridge, and, and we had to, and we got the bridge ready to operate, so they can, they could do their own testing and inspection. So they are working on it. I also have a meeting with Mass DOT at the end of this week.
Do you know if they're planning a replacement? It would seem to me that you're spending $2 million on a study and design, that we'd be replacing the existing bridge with something.
Right. So they haven't decided yet? That's what the inspections were for? So it's either, like I said, it's either gonna be a replacement or rehabilitation.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And then, Mr. Yenna, I know you have a question down here.
Can I talk about an article here? I wanna ask some questions about an article. First one on here. Jaraback Farm.
About, about a line item on this Article Five?
I wanna know about, I think I know where the farm is, but it don't show here, and what's gonna be done for the farm. I know every farm in town for years. It says ash. I think there's over 100 acres on the Old Fall River Road, it's gonna be tied in with that pathway now. And I believe that, that was thousands of pigs there, and they burned stuff in Fall River, and they fed them garbage, and they brought all the ashes, they dumped it there. Mr. Jaraback died. His wife gave it for a dollar to the town, I think, and I remember. Well, it's a beautiful place, we'll take care of it. Now, after about 50 years, here we go, we're putting money in there. What are they gonna do with this property?
So let's see if, let's see if I can get you an answer to your question. Mr. Carrero, do you?
Where was it located? Was it right, Old Fall River Road?
Well, let me, let me get, let me see if I can get you an answer. Okay, one second, please. So is there someone who can speak to that line item?
So I, I can give a high-level overview, Chris Vitale. A high-level overview of the town's involvement, and then certainly if there's specific questions about monitoring and the responsibilities of the town going forward, we can see if our department heads are here to speak on that.
Where's the location?
It's, so yeah, so it's Old Fall River Road, you know, so.
Mr. Yenna, the questions have to go through me. Let's just remind everyone, I'm happy to, I'm happy to get them answered. Let me, let me see if I can get you, I, I understand they have a question. Let's see if we can hear, let, your, your mic is not on, so let me see if I can get him to answer the first part of your question, and then if you have follow-up questions, I'd be hap, just direct them to me, and we'll try and get those answered. So, Mr. Vitale, it's on Old Fall River Road.
Yeah, so, Old Fall River Road, it is owned by the town, we are currently doing the testing. We had money that we were utilizing for this. Now, the funding source that we had, we no longer have those funds available. So to continue with our obligation to monitor the site, we're back here before town meeting, requesting these funds, so I believe these activities, we undertake on an annual basis. It's really just, I think it's soil testing and mowing, is my understanding of the scope of work of it, but certainly any specific questions on what the town is doing out there, I can see if one of our departments can speak further on it.
Okay, so, so we're testing for what, though? I'm not sure.
Uh, ground, ground conditions, soil conditions. And Mark Garrett's here, Environmental Affairs Coordinator.
Let's have Mr. Garrett, see if he can help us answer to this question. Thank you, Mr. Garrett, for coming down.
This is moderator, town meeting members. Back, and I think Mr. Yenna has summarized the beginnings of this. Back in the late 90s, mid 90s to late 90s, there was discussion about a land donation from Barbara Jaraback to the town of Dartmouth, and it was the Jaraback Farm. Series of parcels, it was a pig farm, and they did dump ash from, I believe it was Fall River, but there may have been other sources. Over, I would say, five to six years, there were discussions and negotiations, and finally, in 2002, I, let me back up a little bit. Part of these discussions was also Mass DEP, DEP being involved, because this was a landfill, and it was a solid waste issue. The donation was for recreational fields, DEP initially was supportive of that, but then not so much. Moving ahead to about 2002, there was an offer made by Barbara Jaraback to the town for $1, for the town to take the land. The Conservation Commission, my predecessor, Michael Riley, took this up, recommended accepting the donation, and the donation came with a $25,000 fund to do monitoring and testing of the soils and groundwater. Then it just became a groundwater issue. And also to maintain the cap that was placed over the former landfill. That $25,000 was expended last year, and the state is still mandating we continue to do the work, although the consultants that have been retained, the LSP, has requested since the groundwater has been basically clean, that the monitoring cease. But DEP has not relented. Last spring, DEP came out, we visited the site, and they have not come back with findings, I believe. The both myself and Chris Micho, Public Health Director, are of the opinion that they're certainly going to continue the requirements of the town to monitor and maintain, and there is the potential that they may increase those responsibilities, we don't know. The fact of the matter is, this line item is, I believe, a holdover, so that if we get new requirements, we'll be able to handle them in a timely manner. The site has been monitored and maintained through the Conservation Commission, although the deed does not specifically say that the Conservation Commission is responsible, although the Conservation did vote in 2002 to accept the donation. That's what I know right now. We are awaiting a report from DEP as to the results of the site visit. I can tell you that the most recent water quality has been clean, the cap has been maintained. The big concern about maintenance, for those of you who don't understand landfill caps, is you cannot have trees and large shrubs growing, because what happens is their root walls compromise the cap, and therefore, water gets in, and whatever is in the ground, if problematic, can migrate laterally into surrounding groundwater. So we've been on top of it, we have met the requirements to date. Unfortunately, the funding that was accepted back in 2002 ran out, costs go up, and so the, there's been a discussion to kind of bridge this situation, and hopefully, we can come to terms with DEP on what we have to do in the future. But the town did accept responsibility for the liability when they accepted the, the land.
Thank you, Mr. Garrett. Do you have a follow-up question, Mr. Yenna?
Thank you for your information. I'd like everybody to know that that's one of the largest pieces that the town owns of land, hundreds of acres. Someday, I think we're gonna come here and say, what are we gonna do with it? So we're gonna have to figure out how much we spent, and so forth. So I'd just like to have everybody know what, what this $25,000 is for. That's no money, as far as I'm concerned, but the size of that place, it's huge, and it's all woods. I live next to it, I know it is very nice, but it's something that somebody's gotta think about in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Yenna.
To that, real quickly, Mr. Tattelbaum just talked about long-range planning. I can tell you, the Environmental Affairs Coordinator will be recommending a open space, you know, looking at open space in the long term, because there's a lot of land out there, and you're right, what are we gonna do with it? What's, what are the outcomes?
Thank you, Mr. Garrett. Any further discussion on Article Five? Down in front here, please.
Joan Menard, Precinct Nine. I watched the video, thank you, that was very good, and it showed a image of the Vact or truck, but for $638,000, I kinda wanna know what it does.
Let's see if we can get you an answer to that.
I would let you know that it's a big vacuum cleaner, but I'm sure Tim would be able to explain a little more detail.
Mr. Barber?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. So unfortunately, I don't have a good picture of it, but it's a, it's a large diesel vehicle that has a, has a, like a large septic tank on the back, and, and also has a tank full of water, and we use it to, like Gary said, vacuum out catch basins, vacuum out sewer pump station wells. We use it during water main breaks or sewer main breaks to help excavate the saturated soils, so.
Thank you. Do you have a follow-up question?
Yes, I do, thank you. Is it a replacement or new?
It is replacement.
Any further discussion on Article Five? Right here, please.
Andrea Langhauser, Precinct Seven. This is a question you might want Tim Barber for. I just, I wonder.
Mr. Barber, stay close to the podium.
I was just wondering, on Arnold Street, it says that there's a Phase One street improvement, and I was wondering what that meant in terms of drivability? And then I had a second question about an acronym down below.
Sure, you wanna ask that while?
Yeah, if you could explain the acronym SCADA. It's used in the improvements of the water plant, and also the preliminary treatment at the sewer plant.
So it's SCADA, it's our communications for, to control all of our treatment and pump stations in the sewer, as well as our water treatment. We use, we use SCADA, which is a, it's a, it's all computer-aided communication.
Thank you. And how about on the Arnold Street, Phase One improvement? This is under the DPW Highway Division. It says Arnold Street, Dartmouth Street to Russell's Mills, Phase One, street improvement, and the question was related to what that means in terms of drivability for that road, please.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. So Phase One just means that it, it's a section of Arnold Street. Arnold Street's a longer street, so we have multiple phases of reconstruction planned for that area, including sidewalks and curbing and, and roadway.
Thank you. Any further questions with regard to the gentleman right here?
So, in light of the fact that this is long-term planning?
No, this is short-term. These are, these are short-term expenditures.
Okay.
And Mr. Tattelbaum did talk about long-term planning, and I think he was highlighting that while these are short-term expenditures in Article Five, there is a longer range, there's a, there's a group that's doing longer-range planning for the town.
That's, that's fine. But in the short term, we're gonna be looking at the, the water pollution control facility as well, as far as upgrading that facility. I'd like to know more about that facility, as far as what is planned, or what they're looking at for total nitrogen removal. looking at for total nitrogen removal on that plant, if they are looking at that, and other aspects of total nitrogen removal within the town of Dartmouth.
Thank you. Mr. Barber.
Madam Moderator. So we're not at that point yet, but we are, we've had multiple consultants tour the wastewater treatment facility, and we've started applying for grants for asset management for our collection system, and we plan to move further along. Once we, once we choose the consultant, we don't have a, right now, a nitrogen removal number, but we do have, I think I mentioned this in prior meetings, we're currently at 75% design of our interim upgrade, which includes, which included some grant funding for nitrogen removal for the existing facility, prior to the large, large capacity upgrade that we're looking towards in the future. So, so more of a short-term capital improvement is, is nitrogen removal.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Mr. Silva, in the middle here, please.
Nathan Silva, Precinct 6. And pardon my ignorance, but I think I heard that the Vactor truck will be used for both pumping sewers, but also stormwater. What makes a determination as to whether that gets funded through the solid waste enterprise fund or the surplus revenue? I believe we're funding it through surplus revenue.
So, is it fully surplus? Okay.
How does that get decided, Mr. Carr? Is that something you can help us with?
Through you, Madam Moderator. It all depends on the majority of time that it's being used, so if it's being used for more of the catch basins, if it's being used more for sewer or water. Back in, back in the day, we used to allocate, like, different allocations for like pickup trucks and things like that sort, but in this instance, this is pretty much a town-wide vehicle that could be used for general fund purposes, utility purposes. It's just that the general fund usually picks up something that's a larger piece of equipment that's being used town-wide.
Thank you.
And if I can, I can add a little more to that. The vehicle is housed at the Highway Department, and it's typically operated by the Highway Crew to do this work, so that typically makes it more general fund. Sometimes we, like Gary said, sometimes we split it up either half or one-third each department, but...
Thank you. Anything else on Article 5? The gentleman over there.
Paul Bancroft, Precinct 1. I think this question is for Mr. Carrera. See a lot of line items here, IT technology-related, and I was just wondering, is there collaboration across departments on the, on the IT front, especially pursuant cyber solutions, to make sure that we're consistent across all departments, and that we're, all the systems will be interoperable amongst each other as needed?
Thank you, Mr. Carrera.
Through you, Madam Moderator. So through our IT Director, we, we work with multiple departments in town, not only just on the town side, but also on the school side, sharing resources. Over the last few years, we've implemented a lot of stop-gap measures to mitigate a lot of these issues that I spoke about at the onset, and there's testing that's involved, you know, emails that are sent out, trying to catch people opening up, opening up an email, for instance, that might be, have a potential for an attack onto the system. So these are ongoing things. There's been a big push and a big initiative at the, at the last town meeting to get a lot of this implemented, as mentioned. You know, back of the day, going of the days where people are breaking into vaults, I mean, it's coming to the point where it's, it's pretty scary that they're coming after information, which in a municipality, it's much more valuable, when they're holding back records for like finance items such as HIPAA documents, so, and then hold that against the town and then want ransom for that. So it is very important that we continue this initiative, and we do work through departments to, not only in the Finance Department, but other departments throughout town, to make sure that these things are implemented and working.
Thank you. Anything else on Article 5? Are we ready to vote? All in favor of Article 5, please raise your hand. Opposed, please raise your hand. Article 5 passes at 7:50. Article 6, Personnel Bylaw Amendment, Salary Adjustments, New Position, Elimination of Positions. Mr. Vitale.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. So Article 6 is a housekeeping article. The goal of this article is to update our personnel bylaw by listing the emergency management director position, removing job titles no longer in use by the town, and amending the compensation for two town positions to bring them up to date.
Thank you very much. Do you have a motion, please? And a second?
Second.
Thank you. Select Board recommendation?
Select Board recommends 5.0.
And the Finance Committee, please.
FinCom recommends 7.00.
Thank you very much. Any discussion on Article 6? Are we ready to vote? All in favor of Article 6, please raise your hand. Opposed, please raise your hand. Article 6 passes at 7:51. Article 7, Charter Amendment, Dartmouth Housing Authority. Mr. Vitale.
And so I'll actually refer this over to Town Council.
Town Council. Mr. Savistano, please.
So in the spring, when we drafted the omnibus warrant article, which made numerous changes to the charter as a whole, we left the Dartmouth Housing Authority alone. The Attorney General reviewed the changes and made a comment that the law had changed such that the makeup of housing authorities under the statute was different from that of our charter. So this is simply amending the charter, so our charter will be consistent with state law, and if state law changes again in the future, we won't need to come back and keep changing our charter. So basically, what we're saying is, however the statute sets up housing authorities, our town will follow suit.
Thank you. Do I have a motion? And a second? Thank you. Select Board recommendation?
Select Board recommends 5.0.
And Finance Committee recommendation, please.
FinCom recommends 8.00.
Thank you very much. Is there any discussion on Article 7? Just to let you know, it requires a two-thirds vote for passage, because it's a charter amendment. Are we ready to vote? All, I'm sorry. Down here, please.
Thank you. Joan Menard, Precinct 9. I don't really understand the wording on this. They shall be elected and appointed pursuant to general laws. My English says it should say elected or appointed.
Some members are appointed, some members are elected according to the statute.
It's an unusual one.
Any further discussion? Are we ready to vote? All in favor of Article 7, please indicate by raising your hand. Opposed, please raise your hand. Article 7 passes at 7:53. Article 8, Citizen Petition, Health Insurance Study. So on this, I have to inform you, and Town Council may choose to expand on it, the Town Council has indicated that the town meeting does not have the authority to bind the Select Board to any action. I'm inclined to let the citizen petition be heard, and Mrs. Savistano, do you wanna speak to that any further?
Yes, I would say that this warrant article is not legal for a number of reasons, but first, primarily, it's not even written as a warrant article, but more importantly, it's internally inconsistent, but it appears to say that town meeting is telling the Select Board what action to take. Town meeting does not have that authority, so my recommendation would be a motion, motion to indefinitely postpone.
Thank you, Mr. Savistano. Do we have a sponsor for this article that would like to speak on it? Are you the sponsor, sir?
Yes.
Sure, come on down, please, and maybe you can talk, speak to this.
Peter Nolton, 6th Precinct. I actually, I'm not gonna speak, well, I am gonna speak on the warrant, but I actually have questions for the attorney, because I don't understand what the attorney just said and why it is that we can't vote on it.
I'm gonna allow you to vote on it. What I'm, what I'm not sure that it's going to bind, bind the town meeting, bind the Select Board into action, but I'm certainly gonna allow you to vote on. So what I'd really like you to do is summarize it right now...
Fine, no problem.
And then we can see if we can get a motion and a second and have discussion.
Sure, okay, great, thank you.
Please.
Peter Nolton, Precinct 6. I ran as a town meeting member like we all did, to make our town a better place. One of the things that does not make our town a better place is the health insurance, both in relationship to the town and in relationship to employees, but most of us don't know that. I venture to guess that probably very few people here know how much our town employees pay for health insurance, to the degree that some paraprofessionals barely make a paycheck, because they have to pay so much for health insurance, especially if they're on the family plan. So this is a financial study that we're requesting that the town meeting authorize for us to study the health insurance situation in our town, both in terms of what we pay, and health insurance is by far and away the vast majority of benefits that we pay our town employees, over $8 million, and it has increased 36% over the last two years, two and a half years. So it's a huge benefit. We have a fiduciary responsibility for our employees and for our town to provide the best possible quality health insurance that we can. There is state legislation that has been pending for a while and is in the State House that would reduce potentially the town bill on health insurance, and this does not include the savings to town employees of over $1.5 million. I know this because I'm part of a group that engages in this study, and we've been studying the health insurance system in Massachusetts and how it affects cities and towns for decades. We know that the legislation the town called Medicare for All in Massachusetts would directly impact every city and town in the state, every city and town employee in the state in very beneficial ways, and yet, we don't do the studies, we don't educate ourselves about what this savings is. This is the single biggest benefit we give our town employees. It is the single biggest expense that town employees have. Some employees take a $5 to $10 an hour pay cut just to have health insurance. That's outrageous. Our town has gone up on the insurance premiums by 36%. Now the town, just like every other employer in the state and in the country, is trying to save on health insurance in terms of what we pay as a town, because we can't afford to pay a lot more, but that what we pay, but that what we pay now, they're trying to cheapen it a little by making employees engage in health savings accounts, having additional payments be made by town employees in an effort to reduce costs, and I understand that. But it is important for us, as the largest legislative body in our town, to deal with this, one of the largest expenses that the town engages in, and where increases continue to rise on a regular basis. All this is, is a study. We should understand that. I kinda feel like Allen Iverson when he said, "Were you talking about practice? We're just talking about..." This is just a study we're talking about. We're just talking about doing a study so that we understand the health insurance landscape and as it is in relationship to legislation that is pending in our state legislature now.
I'm assuming you wanna move this article?
Yes.
Okay, and do I have a second? Have a second, okay. Has the Select Board made any kind of recommendation on this warrant article?
Based upon the information given to us by Town Council, the Select Board voted 0.5 against the article.
And the Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommended 4.22.
Thank you. Any discussion on Article 8 that is before us? In front. Mrs. Stone.
Laura Stone, Precinct 8. I just wanted to hear from both the Select Board, Finance Committee, and potentially from Chris Vitale and Gary Carrero about what has been done previously, because this is not the first time that health insurance costs have not been reviewed, that it hasn't figured into your collective bargaining agreements. I wouldn't want you to break confidentiality on those bargaining discussions, but I would wanna know what you've done comparable to what's being requested in terms of where we stand, so we can make an educated decision about whether this would complement that, be repetitive. I think we would all benefit from that.
Great question. Let me see if I can get you an answer. Mr. Carrero, do you wanna speak to that, please?
Yes, through you, Madam Moderator. So at the last budget cycle that we went through, we did implement some changes to the health insurance. The health insurance trends typically about 10% increase each year. As you know, we're in a collaborative called MYA, and we were, you know, we're at the mercy of their rates, but they, but they, they're a huge group. So what we did last year was we implemented for new employees, high deductible plan. So that means that the employer, the employee would be spending a little bit more for their health insurance. We've implemented HSA accounts, so the town has done some, some items that, that mitigate the cost to the residents by trying to put a little bit more into a savings account for the employees and adding more to the budget so that we could get the transition from people that were on these Cadillac plans back in the day to move towards more of a plan that allows them to manage their own health savings account, and they ended up paying a little bit more for, for the, for the, actually, the health, the health savings account was complementing the policies that we put in place, that the employees paid less, but, you know, if you're going to the, to the doctor, for instance, and the co-pays may be a little bit higher. So over the last year, we have implemented some changes to the, to the health insurance for the towns, but as, as inflation continues to rise, as you know, so does the insurance industry, and, you know, we're seeing substantial increases for insurance for the, for townwide employees.
Thank you. Mr. Tattelbaum, would you like to speak to this? I'm sorry, Chris, did you wanna be recognized as well?
Just to reiterate a little bit of what Gary said, so we're continuing to evaluate different options to lower healthcare costs, so Gary mentioned our efforts with HSA and tried to make that a little more attractive. I would say those efforts differ from this proposal in the sense that what's before you is a committee to study a bill that's being considered by the state legislature. Now that bill may change, you know, it'll be amended with the state, and ultimately, just what would its impact be on the town, and that recommendation or that report, I think, is outlined in the article, would be brought back to town meeting to essentially say, "Here were our findings." So it's a little bit different in terms of its scope and the overall plan and structure and how staff would pay for their healthcare. It's just different from our current model. So nothing, I guess where we come in is it's not anything to speak on the proposal at the state, it's more just the procedure locally in terms of how the town, if the town would want to explore that option, so hopefully that gives a little more explanation there.
Thank you, Mr. Tattelbaum. Did you have something you wanted to add?
My understanding, when we voted, Mr. Savistano made it clear that we were not voting on the item, on the description, or the choice, we were voting on the legality of the process. He said it was illegal, and he's our Town Council, and I trust him, so we voted 0 to 5. My perception of all this, if you wanna, Mr. Nolton, you wanna come by and come to a Select Board meeting and send us, and make a presentation, you wanna form a committee, and you wanna study it and come back to us, we could then take some action on it and do with the process the way that I understand the way we usually do things, and I, for one, would be happy to have to come before us and make a presentation, but we voted against the process, not against the idea. Who doesn't wanna save money on health insurance if it's possible? And we made some great gains over the last couple of years, but every year, it gets worse each year, as we all know. Thank you.
Mr. Savistano, did you wanna address some of the concerns?
Yes, well, first of all, like I said, it's not even worded like a warrant article. Secondly, it's internally inconsistent. It says the town meeting supports the creation, it doesn't, but then it goes on to talk about what that committee shall be, so it appears to instruct the Select Board to take action, and town meeting does not have that authority. So whether you think this is a good idea or a bad idea, it's really irrelevant. The warrant article as drafted is not legally sound.
Did the FinCom have any discussion that they wanna share about this warrant article, Mr. Goffin? I think you're on.
Okay. We had a spirited discussion on this. I would, I was in the minority, but I would offer anybody who was in the majority who would like to speak, to, to offer their opinion, or I can just read the majority opinion. You wanna speak on it? Okay.
So, Mr. Suzy, would you like to speak to this for the majority opinion for the FinCom? Is that correct?
It's a majority.
You're part of the majority, yes. Thank you.
So when the John Su's, Precinct 4, when the committee... So when the John Suze, Precinct Four, when the committee voted on this article, we didn't have the pleasure of Town Council's advice. Town Council had informed an opinion at that time. We've learned since then that he has, and I don't question Town Council's opinion, but at the time, the Finance Committee was looking at this, the majority thought, "What's the harm? There's no cost to the town to at least do a study." I personally, when it comes to healthcare costs, as we all have seen over the decades, local government, state government, federal government, has never solved this issue. My entire life, work and career, I've seen health costs, healthcare costs just increase, increase, increase. There never seems to be a solution. Government hasn't solved the problem. And here comes this volunteer, just an idea and possibly a solution to some savings to the town. And I personally, I think the majority said, "What's the harm?" Unfortunately, you know, Town Council's saying, "We can't bind the Select Board to move forward to this." But it seems to me, if we're all in agreeance, if, if people have the same opinion that I do, that this is just out of control, I, I don't have any faith in state or federal government will ever solve this. Why not start a grassroots effort? That's what town meeting is about. It's why I love town meeting. It's, it's, it's a grassroots, start an effort and see where we could go with this, see what that group can come up with as far as recommendation, and maybe, I'm sure it will take years, get the ball rolling on some kind of solution at a grassroots level. So I'm hoping this body can encourage, maybe not take a binding mandate to the Select Board, but simply ask, "Will you move this forward voluntarily without tying the hands and making a binding?" It just seems to me it's unfortunate we can't come to some kind of solution to move this forward.
Well, what I think I heard from Mr. Tattelbaum was that it sounds like, and I, you know, I'm assuming Mr. McDonald is on board with that, that the Select Board would be open to a presentation before them, is what I, was, what I thought I heard. So even if this body chooses to vote against this or postpone indefinitely, it did sound like the Select Board is open to some sort of a presentation.
My mic's off. I don't know if it would be out of order for the majority, at least get a consensus from the body. Do they agree that if there's any savings, possible savings, that the town should at least look at forming a committee? And the Select Board would move forward without taking a vote from?
It sounds to me like the Select Board, it would make most sense for the Select Board to hear their proposal at a Select Board meeting, and then we'd all be better informed as to what that was and maybe be able to move forward. Mr. Goffin, did you have something you wanted to add to the discussion? One moment, let Mr. Goffin finish, and then I'll recognize you.
Janine.
Ms. Simmons.
It's okay, you can call me, Janine. Janine Simmons, also Finance Committee, but also Precinct Eight. As Mr. Goffin already mentioned, we did have a very spirited discussion, and any of you that follow the Finance Committee meetings will realize that what was presented to us goes far beyond what you just heard, as well as the documents that were given to us. Hence, that's the reason why a couple of us chose to write a minority opinion. We did not have the benefit of an opinion from Town Council when this was written, but I like to do my research, so. I, I knew after my research that it was beyond the scope of town meeting's authority and jurisdiction. And we felt that the content that was included in what was presented to us was unsubstantiated data, and it blatantly promoted Massachusetts legislation, one-sided. I found a guide online that was issued by William Francis Galvin, our Secretary of the Commonwealth, and it's called The Citizen's Guide to Town Meeting, and it clearly outlines what town meeting is responsible for. It sets the salaries for elected officials. It votes to appropriate money to run the town, and it votes on the town's local statutes, which are called bylaws. That is what town meeting does.
And I think Goff wanted to add a couple words.
And when I asked how long they would, you know, how many hours they would be doing the study, I was told it'd be about three meetings. So three meetings to do a study for Medicare for All, that's not a lot of time to do something like that. And the Congressional Budget Office, the Urban Institute, and the Rand Corporation have all done thorough studies on Medicare for All and have spent millions and millions of dollars, and these organizations have extensive, extensive resources well beyond the ability of a small town committee.
Mr. McDonald.
Thank you. Just as a reminder to town meeting, healthcare benefits are negotiated benefits, so it has to be negotiated with each section of the, of the unions. Second, there is a health insurance committee made up of a member of town, the town administration, plus a member of each union who study the insurance program. That being said, we don't mind having somebody come before us and asking, you know, to form a committee to look at this, but the problem is this: You can look at pending legislation all you want, but you don't know what it's going to be until you have the final, the final legislation. So, I mean, you could be looking at legislation that requires pink curtains, and some representative from Danvers could say, "No, no, no, we need gray curtains," and that's the one to be accepted. So, I mean, we don't mind setting up a committee to look at this, but we already have a committee that already looks at health insurance. You know, the big thing is this, and this is what, what it all comes down to, is what each taxpayer is willing to afford for healthcare, because ultimately, paying for these benefits comes from the taxpayer. Because right now, our benefits are, if I'm not mistaken, 54-46? Yeah, 54-46, where the town pays 54% and the town, the employee pays 46. It's changed on the high deductible plan, where it's now 65-35, or even gone so far as 70-30. Not many employees have taken up on that. For whatever reason, it's been, the town has pushed it, the town has offered it, the town has discussed it. Some employ, some employers, I'm sorry, some employees have taken up that. The town is requiring new employees to be on that. You know, I mean, there's only so much we can do to offer the program. There, you know, you have people that say, "Well, the other towns and, the other towns have, you know, 60-40 or 75-25." You know, take a look at their tax base compared to Dartmouth. Dartmouth is a low tax base. You know, ultimately, the taxpayer has to decide where you want to go, how, what you want to spend, what you want to spend it on. And that's the same thing. You've got long-range planning coming up, you've got healthcare, you know, all this, all this is all, you know, it all comes out of our pockets. We have to decide, do we want to pay more for a better community that to live in? That's what it is. But if we need to, if we need to take a look at this or have another set of eyes look at it, I don't have a problem having another set of eyes looking at our healthcare insurance. Pending legislation? Eh, I don't know, because it's going to be a different animal when it comes out. Thank you.
I have a couple of people that want to speak on this. The gentleman right there, please.
Hi, Jerry Fishbein, Precinct Five. The conversation is, is more and more difficult as we listen, when we hear that moving people to a high deductible plan is making progress. The reason, I mean, I've negotiated many, many health insurance plans, and the reason people don't take it is because of the high deductibles, it's unaffordable to actually use. Also, I was concerned about some of the opposition rationale. In terms of the document that Mr. Gavin, Secretary Gavin, had produced, he highlights three, and in the words of the document, "Major issues which are representative rightly addressed." But also highlights in that document that the town meeting is to cover all issues in front of the town, all before the town. It says, actually, in that same document, "It's a place to voice our opinions and to directly affect change in our communities, not simply to address those three bullet points." The, I just want to bring people back to the actual language of this motion, and that is whether or not we are able to find in this study group that Dartmouth can save $1.6 million, right, in costs. It doesn't bind Dartmouth to doing anything, and in fact, we couldn't, it wouldn't, we certainly will never step in the way of the collective bargaining representatives bargaining their contracts. But it does give our town meeting and our community, people watching the television stream of this, gives them information that could result in town of Dartmouth, city of New Bedford, town of, city of Fall River, towns across Massachusetts saving tremendous amounts of money and improving the living conditions for public sector workers as well as private sector workers. This motion is to ask to set up a study committee, that's it. To Mr. Suze's point, this is what grassroots change can look like, because now 200 people are talking about a different way to do health insurance, rather than living under the conditions that we live in and just trying to squeeze out as much as we can. Because progress, if we stay this way, if towns across the Commonwealth and representative districts across the Commonwealth continue to walk away from it, then we're going to be squeezed on how, how high can those deductibles go? I want to rewind back to our last Springtown meeting, a really impassioned and powerful statement about the state of recruiting teachers and public workers in Dartmouth and how difficult that is. As long as we're faced with offering benefits like high deductible plans, it's going to be hard to do, to continue to do. So this is a hopeful sign, a plan, an idea to start the discussion. Does it bind? I'm baffled by the illegality of it. Does it bind the town into some financial commitment? The Finance Committee addressed that. No, it does not. So I would speak, if you haven't got an idea, in favor of this motion, ask to sign it. If we, if there is an issue, and the council has pointed out the line about, that is forcing the Select Board to do something, I, I think that is probably where it says that the Select Board will appoint the committee. Then as one of the sponsors of the, I would offer an amendment to strike that language appointed by the Select Board and leave the rest of the warrant, of the motion as is.
Okay, so we have an amendment before us to strike the language. Could you provide it to me in writing or some, some sort of written part to that, please, so that I can adequately reflect it to the body?
The gentleman's offered one line. I'd be interested to hear from Town Council, is there, is there, does that cover the objections in terms of why we voted, voted, advised us to vote against it?
Who's going to appoint the committee? Now it's got no, it's just saying there shall be a, somebody should appoint a committee, but it doesn't say who's appointing the committee. And it would be the Select Board's job, if they were to decide to do so, to appoint that committee.
So I have an amendment before us. If you go to the final paragraph on page nine that begins with "therefore," in the second line, the amendment before us strikes the language appointed by the Select Board. So I have a motion, do I have a second on the amendment? Second on the amendment. Any discussion on the amendment before us? All in favor of the amendment before us, please indicate by raising your hand. Opposed, please raise your hand. Oh my God. Okay, well, that looks like a fairly even split. Let me get a teller count. Okay, so if you are a town meeting member and you are in this section right here, and you are in favor of the amendment to strike the language, please indicate by raising your hand, and please keep your hand up so that they can do a full count. I'll let you know when you can put your hand down. So this section only for right now. Okay, you may put your hand down in the section. If you are in the center section and you are in favor of the amendment, please raise your hand, and I'll let you know when you can put your hand down. If you're in the center section, you can put your hand down. If you are on this side of the auditorium, my left or right, please indicate if you are in favor, please raise your hand if you are in favor of the amendment, so that they can get a good count here, please. If you are, you may put your hand down there, thank you very much. If you are on stage and you are in favor of the amendment, please indicate by raising If you are on this side of the auditorium and you are opposed to the amendment, please indicate by raising your hand for this one section. Great, you may put your hands down. If you're in the center section and you are opposed to the amendment, please indicate by raising your hand. And please leave them up so that they can get a good count. Okay, in the center section, you may put your hand down. If you're on this side of the auditorium and you are opposed to the amendment, please indicate by raising your hand. Thank you, you may put your hands down. If you're on stage and you are a town meeting member and opposed to the amendment, please indicate by raising your hand. Okay, if you're on stage, you may put your hands down. Thank you. Okay. The amendment passes at 8:25. All right, so now we're back to the main motion. Any further discussion on the main motion, or the, someone over there, Mrs. Zimmerman, on the far side, please?
Jane Zimmerman, Precinct Nine. Thank you, Madam Moderator. I would like to speak in favor of this. Again, the idea that's been said about town meeting investing in this issue, it's not binding, it doesn't cost anything, it, it's just something to study that will possibly help reinforce some kind of a new system for the town that can save money. It doesn't seem to me that it's illegal to study something in any way. So, that's all.
Thank you. Anyone else on the aisle here? And I see other hands up.
I'm Mark Roble, Precinct Five. In listening to everything that's been said, I appreciate everything that the sponsor has done, but I think if he takes the plan and goes to the select board, runs it by them, and we've taken the advice of town council, I vote for indefinite postponement.
You're moving for indefinite postponement? Okay, I have a motion on the floor for indefinite postponement. Do I have a second? All in favor of indefinite postponement, please indicate by raising your hand. Opposed, please indicate by raising your hand. The motion for indefinite postponement passes at 8:27. Do I have a motion to dissolve town meeting? And a second? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you very much, everyone. I appreciate your commitment to town meeting tonight. Thank you very much. The meeting is dissolved at 8:27.